Welcome to those joining us from home as well as welcome to everyone that's joined us here this evening. This is the meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, March 10th. And if we could all please rise, Councilman Vernall is going to have our invocation and plead just in the pledge of allegiance.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for all the many blessings you have given us as individuals, as a city, and as a nation. We ask for your continued grace and guidance as we meet here this evening to address the issues before us. Keep us ever mindful of the trust that has been placed in us by our fellow citizens as we fulfill these positions. We ask your special care of those who serve in our public safety services and in our military, especially those who are in harm's way, and we ask our very special care for the families who are separated by that service. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much, Ray. All right, item on the agenda, first item is Audience for Visitors, and we do have a public hearing scheduled, which we may need to postpone, and we will talk about that in a minute. But the next item is Audience for Visitors, who if you'd like to address us on any issue, now is that time, and Dr. Flynn?
Good evening, Mayor Hunt, council members, staff, citizens of Pecosin. I was up here two weeks ago at the Audience for Visitors and brought up the concern of about a bill that was winding its way through Richmond, which was to establish another acronym, Hampton Roads TAC, Transportation Accountability Commission. This commission is the follow-up, I think, from the bill which was passed a year ago, which established the transportation tax fund, at which time our sales tax in Pecosin went up one cent, from five cents to six cents. The rest of the state, I think, just went up a fraction of that, other than Northern Virginia. But in other words, this unduly, I believe, imposed itself on citizens of Hampton Roads when the, probably the main purpose of this transportation bill, going back for the last 10 years, is to build the mystical Third Crossing. We'll get into that in a little bit. This is going to be quite brief. In any event, the, this bill was passed, actually, two days ago, the last day of the legislative agenda in Richmond. They have a habit of doing that. The bill a year ago, from what I read, was passed on the last day. I guess they pass that and get out of town while the, before the heat gets too, too high. The reason for this bill was to set up this organization, this accounting commission, to manage the funds that accrue from the additional tax funding, which will amount to quite, quite a bit of money at some point if it hasn't yet. Specifically, it was stated that this new organization, the HRTAC, would not have any taxing authority. I think this dates back to the HRTA, Hampton Roads Transportation Authority, which was passed 2007, but unfortunately, the Supreme Court ruled unanimously that it was unconstitutional in that it gave an unappointed, or an unelected group of political organization the right to impose taxes, and that was the end of the HRTA. This is, the HRTAC, the new one, is basically the same idea, as far as I can see, but it states that it does not have the right to tax. Reading through it, and I'll just mention a couple of things here, this is kind of dubious. In the bill, it states the administrative expenses of the commission shall be allocated among the component counties and cities. Well, they're going to take the, their bills, which they, I imagine they'll run up quite a bit, and, and pass them on to cities and towns. Webster's Dictionary defines a tax as "a sum levied on members of an organization to defray expenses." I don't see any difference between, between the two definitions. Over and above that, further down in the bill, it, under additional powers, it states that the, the new body, the HRTAC, will have the power to execute contracts, deeds, leases, to employ employees, agents, advisors, consultants, including and without limit attorneys, financial consultants, engineers, et cetera, and determine their duties and compensation. Well, that sounds like an awful lot of power to run up bills, and which will then, as they say, be allocated to the cities and towns. When, when we get our portion allocated to us, we're going to have to raise taxes to pay for it. So to me, this is a tax, but even if it is not deemed legally to be a tax, it certainly allows this organization to run up a tremendous bill and hand the tab to the component cities, Pecosin and the other 13 members of the Hampton Roads Planning District. Over and above that, it, it may, may not be a legal taxing organization. Even if it's not considered a tax, it gives them the power to spend an awful lot of the money from the fund, which is supposed to go for transportation projects, and to dole out to their consultants, engineers, on and on, and undermine the purpose of the, the bill, and that is to build necessary transportation projects. Finally, I'll mention, a lot of this dates back to 2007, 2008, when the HRTA was brought into existence and then summarily shot down by the Supreme Court. The priority of the projects, at that time, the priority was oddly enough skewed to the south side. One of the studies that was done suggested that the peninsula component of the HRTA would supply 30% of the funds and receive 8% of the projects. And the projects at the time, they're pretty much the same as they are now, and that's upgrading Route 460 towards Petersburg, the Virginia Expressway, the Midtown Tunnel, and mainly, a $4 billion misnamed project called the Third Crossing. Well, it's not a Third Crossing. It's, it's a spur from the Norfolk Port System in Craney Island to merge into the Monitor Merrimack Tunnel. And the study concluded was, not only would this not reduce traffic congestion, which is the bait that they use, we need to get this transportation bill passed so it decreases transportation. The study said that it would add thousands of trucks to Route 64, and actually worsen congestion. And the only 8% that the peninsula would get was a widening of Route 64 up till, to West Point, and I'm not sure how that helps us that much in any event. Anyway, I thought I would come up and ventilate a little bit about this, and I still think there is some strong questions about this new entity that has just been created two days ago. In fact, I don't think it's in existence until the governor signs it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flynn. Anyone else, Audience for Visitors? Seeing none, I'll close the Audience for Visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular meeting of February 24th, 2014.
Second. Motion made in second that we approve those minutes. Vicki, please.
Certainly. Councilman Seth Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernall.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, and this is based on a receipt of bids and ordinance awarding a utility easement for natural gas to the telecommunications tower at 500 City Hall Avenue. I do not believe that we received a bid.
That's correct.
So what I would say is that we should postpone this item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we postpone the public hearing on the receipt of bids for utilities.
Second. Okay, a good suggestion here, maybe we should clarify a date so that we do not have to re-advertise for a public hearing.
Postpone it until our next meeting.
Okay? You okay with the second on that?
Second, yes.
All right.
Certainly. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernall.
Aye.
Councilman Air.
Aye.
Councilman Seth Hall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Next item is new business, and there we have an ordinance amending the definitions included in the flood ordinance pertaining to repetitive losses. Danny, how would you like to proceed with presentation?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ken Summersett is here, if you have questions. The action before you this evening was necessitated by a letter that we recently received from FEMA, and I'll summarize this for you. It, it acknowledged that the language in your current ordinance was reviewed and approved by the state, and reviewed and approved by FEMA Region 3, which is the group that oversees this area for the purposes of, of issues of flooding, but that we now needed to make an amendment, and you see the amendment in your ordinance, it comes from them, language submitted by them, and it acknowledged reflecting their, their updated requirements. It's on page four of the ordinance, I apologize that it's not numbered. It is only a small section, and it's towards the bottom of page four. It eliminates the current definition of repetitive loss, which is six lines in your ordinance, and replaces it with a new definition, which for those at home, since it's short, I'll just read it if that's all right.
That's fine.
replaces the current definition and replaces it with the following. Repetitive loss definition means a structure that has flood-related damage on two separate occasions during a 10-year period for which the cost of the repairs at the time of such flood event, on average, equals or exceeds 25% of the market value of the structure before the damage occurred. Along with their letter requesting that we make this change, they were clear that until such time that we made this change, that they would not be in a position to grant any additional flood-related grants to any of our citizens that may wish and would otherwise qualify. Failure to do so expeditiously may impact some unnumbered and unspecified grants already made to our citizens, and may have an impact on the CRS rating. So while none of that feels good, and there's a lot of concern about the way that they handled this, we still find ourselves in a position that, that this, this change is here for your consideration. I recommend you approve it primarily because the folks that would be impacted negatively by failure to do so are our citizens, those that may wish to proceed with a future grant or even those that have already received one. And Ken's here to, to elaborate on that, but I, I think I nailed it pretty clearly.
I think you did. So what I would expand on, council, is I brought a copy of the letter from FEMA for you to see, and I've passed it down or around. I'd like you to just, you know, as council reads it, take note of the tone of the letter for such a simple change. It's kind of like, this would not have been an issue, and I don't really understand the tone of the letter, you know, but it was, it was more of a, you do this because we're the federal government and you guys are a city. Okay? And it was really poorly worded, and for somebody, for a group that's, I think, worked with FEMA very well. So we will take exception to that letter, or at least I will, and then send it back up with. I think we should. Saying that, you know, in fact, we did put this in, and that it's a very simple change, and it could have been done without all this ban.
It even looks like it makes it a much easier to read, more usable definition that, you know.
I just don't get it.
A good thing.
It's kind of like, okay.
Why threaten us?
So anyway, with that being said, is there a motion to make this change?
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance, amend the code of ordinances of the city of Pecosin, Virginia by revising Chapter 42 Floods, Article 2, Division 1, and we do this as an emergency measure.
Second. Okay. Motion made in second that we approve this, and that we do so as an emergency measure. Any questions or comments, further comments? Okay, Vicki, please.
Certainly. Councilman Seth Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernall.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Air.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
The motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Next item under new business is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a joint letter with York County to the HRTPO, and this is regarding the priority of Victory Boulevard widening. Would you like?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be pleased to. As council members know, the widening of Victory Boulevard is an important component of your comprehensive plan, and has been something that this council's discussed as a group at length, as recently as a retreat a couple of summers ago. We have been trying, and apparently they have been trying as well, they being York County, to build some synergy between the two localities, since improvements in the city of Pecosin in and of themselves resolve only a portion of, of the issue, which is the deteriorating road conditions from the point where it narrows in York County. We were approached a couple of months ago by a member of the board supervisors who expressed a willingness to sort of restart that process. This letter was recommended as one of the, of the things necessary to, to do that, is recommended to us by the, the TPO staff, and it simply says to those that are planning that this is important, that both communities believe it is important, it should be dealt with as a single project scope, and is in many ways like the project that we initiated with the city of Hampton and others, that, that moved forward the With Creek project, very similar. It starts with a, a joint letter, and again, this is something that is a factor in both comprehensive plans. It is an extremely important corridor for us, as well as, as our immediate neighbors at Fort, or at Fort Eustis and Langley, as, as they have a, the most expeditious transportation corridor between the two, as well as NASA.
So question, kind of like I said, this is something that we discussed, it's something that's aimed at the TPO. This is just the start of the process. Tomorrow morning, we're going to address this at the Peninsula Leadership Meeting with NASA and Langley, since it's joint base Langley-Eustis now, and try and get them to help at the TPO meetings. As y'all know, myself and then Buddy regularly go to the TPO, we'll be trying to, to work this project up the list of things, you know, priorities and all that sort of stuff, so that we can get this thing going on the ground in the near future for the state, which could be 10 years or so. Somebody's life.
It will be, it will be a long journey.
Long journey.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor, in this case you, to sign a joint letter with York County expressing support for the widening of Victory Boulevard, Route 171, within both localities.
Okay, motion made in second that we approve this resolution. Questions or comments? Now Vicki, please.
Certainly. Councilman Air.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Seth Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernall.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Comments of the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one item this evening. Members of council are aware, but we have not discussed it publicly, so I thought I'd take a moment. You celebrate your accomplishments as a community, and recently, our city was recognized by Movoto.com as the leader in its top 10 safest places in Virginia. We are joined in the top 10 by our Hampton Roads brothers and sisters in, in Williamsburg as well. There are a lot of people to be thankful for this, certainly our police department, but it's much broader than that. It's, it's our school division, it's our, it's our citizens, it's our community groups, it's our fire department, it's really everyone that is part of this community. This kind of thing doesn't happen by accident, I don't mean the recognition, but the things that go behind it, without a real community dedication to a sense of place. And I thought, and we could still do it if you'd like, to bring representatives of the police department here, but it's disruptive for them every time we do that, and I thought maybe a better thing, given, given the importance of this recognition, is that they were next all-hand staff meeting, which they have once a quarter, perhaps this time we could do it in reverse, and the city council and staff and public, if they'd like to come, could go there.
That'd be great.
And maybe even, maybe even bring them dinner, and just say thank you.
Okay.
And that's all I have, sir.
Make it a day. Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Vernall, council directives.
I wouldn't exactly call it a directive, but I'm sure that everyone saw the paper today with the information about how much money school systems are losing, and how we seem to be a disproportionate share of that. This issue was theoretically resolved in the 60s by two cases, one in California and one in Texas, where it was determined that, that the state, if they offered an education, had a responsibility to provide the necessary funding for equal education throughout the state, and not leave it to the wealth of the localities. But that seems to be the way we're heading now, so whether we'll have any respite from that or not, but it's, it's getting very serious, no question.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Green.
Just to remind the audience that the Pecosin Education Foundation is having its fourth annual fundraiser on March the 29th at the Pecosin Yacht Club. There'll be a live and a silent auction, dancing, and the theme this year is a Vegas night, so there'll be gaming tables, and a lot of fun for everybody. If you want tickets, notify anybody on the PEF, or call me, or call my wife, Pat, and we'll be happy to hook you up with some tickets.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Air.
I just wanted to thank, actually, the Pecosin Education Foundation, and Mr. French, and some of those folks that put together the Read Across America last week, and a bunch of us attended that. And when you sit there and read to those kids and just see how excited they are, and the questions they started asking you back, I wasn't asking these kind of questions in second grade kindergarten.
What book did you read?
Cat Kong, actually, but it's just, there's certainly some hope for the future of this country. We have some very sharp young, young folks that are light-years ahead of where I probably was in second grade, first grade, second grade, kindergarten. Also, the PAWS is having one of their first big fundraisers at, also on March the 29th. It's called Eat a Dog and Save a Cat, and that is going to be at Bull Island BBQ on the 29th. You can go on Facebook under the PAWS page, or actually look up Eat a Dog, Save a Cat, and that's also, like I said, on the 29th down at Bull Island BBQ, down at Messick Point. And again, as to reiterate what the city manager said, I, I got that in a form of a text message right when it was announced, from somebody that doesn't even live in Virginia that's a former Pecosin resident, that said how bad they sure miss Pecosin. And so we, we've certainly got a, the secret, it's never been a secret, but it's getting out again, just how great this place is. And I would also, like Flynn, I appreciate you coming in and bringing this to our attention. I copied that bill and read through it today, and there is some reason for concern in that, I believe, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention as well.
Okay. Did you want to say anything about the school? I see you get your paper there.
Well, as Dr. Vernall said.
I don't think you can stress it too much.
It's, if you haven't seen the paper, take a look at it and see the disproportionate percentage compared to us and some of my neighbors, what, what that number is, and, and read through it, and look at the, call your representatives, these unfunded mandates that are coming down from the state, SOQs, you name it, some, some things that really need some attention, and we need to be making some calls. Our, our staff here, our superintendent in the school, I don't know how they can continue to do what they do, operate the way they operate, with these, some of these unfunded mandates and things that are coming down the pike, so people need to hear us loud and clear, that we just can't sit back and take much more of this.
Thank you very much. Councilman Seth Hall.
Yeah, I'd like to share Henry's thoughts about the, the budgets, and I too recommend everyone listening to pay attention and call the representatives, because it's, the state's not doing the right thing relative to education funding. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Flynn, again, myself, for coming out. He's exercising his civic duties and responsibilities, and he brings up some very important points that we really need to pay attention to.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Crawford.
First off, I'd like to, I came running here in the nick of time from a lacrosse game, the boys' first lacrosse game of the year versus Menchville, and I got a text that they won 12 to 6, so congratulations to them. And I wanted to invite everybody to this weekend, this Saturday, at the primary school, the Kiwanis is having their first annual, hopefully annual, boating flea market, and it's an opportunity, we're such a, a water-centered community, it's an opportunity for people to get rid of some things that they may no longer be using, and other people to get, you know, yard sale prices on some, some boating equipment, or, or tackle, or fishing goods of some sort. And finally, I did, I don't have the memo with me from this week, but there were, there was a note about some road closings.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you read those out loud?
I will.
So the public will be aware of when and where.
Absolutely, if you could just give me half a second. There you go. All right, thank you very much.
One of them happened today, and I know we were actually doing that today. Pecosin Avenue was reduced to a single lane between Lodge Road and 1228 Pecosin Avenue. The road work consisted of milling and resurfacing, and that had to do with South Lawson Park. Tomorrow, there will be work in the area of Little Florida and Hopkins Court to deal with some soft spots in the pavement there, and, and those are the two things this week, and we did use our social network to push it out, but thank you for bringing it up, because every time we can help people avoid something they don't expect, that's a good thing, so thank you for that.
Anything else?
That is all.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Just wanted to comment our attorney clerk and manager for keeping us out of the paper. We've read about several times lately where our associates have been accused of violating laws and such, and so far, we haven't had to read about ourselves. And I think we just take for granted that we got y'all sitting down there making sure we do right, so every now and then y'all will be recognized, I think.
Isn't it because we got a car dealer on here now?
Well, that's a good point, too.
We do our best to keep you out of jail.
Yes, and it's appreciation.
It's appreciated.
We simply can't afford the increases in the adult detention budget.
And as Councilman Air talked about, our, our second graders, I get to see those folks as young adults about 12 years later, and they're good, solid citizens, so I'd certainly echo what you, what you say. That's all.
All right, and I'll just, you know, echo all the things, I know we all enjoyed reading to the kids, and a lot of good things are going on in the city of Pecosin, but, and you all hit on it adequately, perfect. Dr. Flynn brings up a very good point, state issue, right? And then, within just a few minutes after that, you know, we're discussing state funding for education. Okay? So what I would tell the people at home is, yes, you see us all at Farm Fresh, you see us all every day, you see the things that the city of Pecosin delivers to you. You see our schools, and what I would tell you is that you're going to have, you're going to be looking at city council very shortly on both, on both of these issues, because we are going to have to make up funding this loss from the state. So it's very important that you, not only do we say, you know, we have issues that we have to manage within ourselves, and I think we do a very good job at controlling spending, but we are not going to be able to maintain the quality of our school systems with repetitive losses. And I will give you the raw numbers that, you know, are we saying enough to the state? I tell you that I testified two years ago to the Senate budget writers, and I said Pecosin is a great example of state not valuing education. And I repeated that call to all of our representatives in the last couple of months. But Pecosin, I think we started out in 2008-ish, we were $14 million of state funding towards our education. We are now down around 10, and that's before this news, okay? So we're basically losing $1 million a year in state funding for education every year that... year that has not, has been able to only be offset by a couple hundred thousand dollars from this council. This hits us again, I feel, for our school superintendent, who's been busy bailing water out of a sinking ship, of funding. Now, what I would tell you is that you're, you as citizens of Pecosin are being sought after because of your ability to pay. Somehow or another, the books say that you can pay more than the city of Hampton, or the city of Newport News, or the city of Portsmouth. And, you know, I don't think that that's the way that you want to run education systems. And I will tell you that when this next budget comes around, you're going to start to feel that. And I just wanted to make it clear, it's not what this council wants to do, it's what this city has to do. Okay? So with that said, I don't have anything else to get on my soapbox about, so I will get down off that, and I think we have a closed session, and that closed session shouldn't take very long. This is just a upbrief of council, consultation with legal counsel, and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual litigation, and this is some business code violations.
Gene?
Excuse me. Before we take a motion on that and vote on it, I want to make one other comment. I think we should pursue our representatives, both state and federal reference, to the tone of that FEMA letter.
I will.
I think that ought to be passed on.
Well, I will. Believe me. I got that one here. That's right here, right in front of me, and you're welcome, like I said, it's right here if anybody would like to read it. All right, so do I have a motion to go?
So move.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded that we go to closed session. Vicki, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Burnall.
Aye.
Councilman Air.
Aye.
Councilman Seth Hall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Call. She needs to file her story and go home.
Okay, we are reconvened from the closed session, and I'll ask for a motion that we certify that closed session. Mr. Mayor, I move that we certify a closed session and that we talk about only what we convene the closed session to talk about. Second. Motion made and seconded. Vicki, please.
Certainly. Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Air.
Aye.
Councilman Seth Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Burnall.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, and a motion to adjourn? No move.
Second.
Vicki, please.
Certainly. Councilman Seth Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Burnall.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Air.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.